Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 5:30, and I will call this work session of the Burnsville City Council to order. This meeting is being conducted both in person and online. And the city clerk will note that all council members are present except for Councilmember Keely, who is attending remotely. So Councilmember Keely is now there. We, I can see him now. Before, I couldn't see him, but there he is. So I hope you're feeling better, Councilmember Keely.
Lots of multi-symptom cold medicine and lots of herbal tea, and I'm functioning.
Okay, good. Well, we're glad to see you, and we're glad that you're not sharing whatever it is that you have.
I thought I'd keep this one to myself.
Yes, I think that's a good idea. Thank you. So, members of the public may attend in person if they like, or the public can also join the meeting online at burnsvilleamend.gov/meetings, or watch us on Comcast Channel 16 or 859. The public can also participate through Zoom by joining us at zoom.us/join. More information is available on our meeting webpage and in the council agenda packet. So this is a work session, and on our work sessions, we go directly to the items that are on our agenda. Before we start this evening, I want to acknowledge that today is Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and I want to thank all of our law enforcement officers. Chief, for the work that you do to keep our city safe. Thank you for everything that you all do. Please extend this to the rest of our troops. I know it's on, it's, I'm addressing it at a council meeting, so it's online. So, thank you so much. We appreciate everything, and we all know that each and every day, our officers go out and put their lives on the line for us, and we truly are grateful for that sacrifice. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Our first item on the agenda is the report on pedestrian safety, and our chief, Tanya Schwartz, is presenting. Chief, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Just back to update you on pedestrian safety, all the research that we did. So, you might recall in May, I believe, we were before the council and presented information on the increased number of pedestrians that we were seeing remaining on the medians in high-traffic areas, and we had pedestrians that were soliciting for charitable donations and garbage and things like that were being left behind. So, we had some complaints that were coming from the community, but primarily, we were looking at what the safety concerns were for pedestrians in the roadways and for drivers as well. It's not safe for pedestrians to be in the median. So, at that time, our Behavioral Health Unit was also engaged because we thought, you know, perhaps there are people that are in need of services, so we wanted to make sure we were providing the right services at the right time. And so, we worked with our county partners to do that, to make contact, first determine are there services that they need, educate people, give them information about where they can be and where they cannot be in terms of soliciting. And at that time, when we met with the council, you asked us to do a couple of things. First, you asked us to research a pedestrian ordinance, a draft pedestrian safety ordinance, and then also to continue to monitor the work that we were doing already. So, the situation, continue to monitor that and continue with our process of education enforcement if we needed, but really look at how do we provide services, educate people, give them some warnings, and help them that way. So, we have completed all of that work now that we're into the new year, and so just here to share the findings of that work that staff did. So, as we looked at the draft ordinance, it was very focused on public safety, of course. So, how do we protect the safety of the pedestrians, and how do we protect driver safety as well? Again, not safe for pedestrians to be on the medians or for them to be reaching into the roadways, and it can be distracting to drivers. So, that was our main focus. And then, how do we make sure that we're narrowly tailored in our regulation so as to not just have a blanket ordinance, to make sure like we're looking at people have constitutional rights, they have free speech, they can be in certain areas on sidewalks? So, we really focused on our four high-traffic areas and looked at that according to traffic volume. So, that was the research that staff was doing during that time to try to develop a draft ordinance. And then, at the same time, we were continuing with the process as directed by council. So, you can see here on our graph, we continued that education piece into June. We had quite a few contacts. We had about 22 contacts with pedestrians on the medians. So, of course, summer's a busy time as well, but you can see even through the summer months as we continued our process of checking for services and providing education materials, we did get compliance as we went through the summer months, and the numbers began to go down. So, that was good. So, there, we did have rare occasion where we did have to issue citation, where we did not get compliance after several times, but we really kind of looked at that big total And as we looked at that total picture, what staff recommended is that we do not implement an ordinance at this time. We really believe that the recent case law that we had supported using the existing statute, so Minnesota Statute 16921, really helps to keep pedestrians and drivers safe. We had, like I mentioned, we had to issue a citation, actually, a couple of citations to an individual, and the district court ruled that the median is part of the roadway. So, we were able to determine that we could use that statute. The Court of Appeals also upheld that. And so, and of course, we're always talking with our city attorney and making sure that we're on point with that, and a city attorney also recommends that we continue to use the statute. So, with that, we would say officers use their discretion, just like they do on any other call. They can determine what next steps they have to take, and they have existing statute to make those decisions. And that would be the best way to keep pedestrians safe at this time. So, really, that's where we're at now for council consideration, is just does this, does the council support, you know, use of the existing statute to promote pedestrian safety? And with that, would really just stand for questions. The city attorney would answer questions as well. So, if there's discussion on that, I'm glad to answer any questions and go from there.
Thank you. Questions for the chief, because I also want to thank you that you continue to update through the process, and also to our attorney for all of the confidential information that was sent. So, thank you very much. But are there any questions, any opposition to what our chief is and Police Department is recommending, that we have statutes in the law that addresses the issues that we were concerned about? Councilmember Gustafson?
I would agree with going with the state statute. You know, it's kind of a safe harbor for us as well, so we don't end up in court as much. But I'm curious, because I know we do a lot of outreach out there. How many people actually take us up on it when we try and get them help?
Right. So, in these circumstances, we had, there were very few that actually wanted to engage for services or needed services. The majority of the individuals were not from the Burnsville area either, so generally speaking, we did not, people did not engage in services. For this particular thing, of course, we do engage other people for services, and, you know, they have to want that. So, there are times people want to, but in these cases, we didn't get that so much. It was more about just, then we need you to be standing on the sidewalk or moving someplace else, and so.
But we continued to offer it?
Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
Perfect. All right.
Councilmember Workman?
Thank you. And just for clarification, the statute says that the median is part of the roadway and that people are not allowed to linger there. They either need to keep walking or not stand there. And that was kind of where we were, I believe we were heading with our own ordinance, was solidifying that or making that more, you know, noticeable upon our visits. Is that, that's still very much the case with the state statute, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
No, please, Attorney.
Councilmember Workman, the statute, it prohibits pedestrians from walking on the roadway when sidewalks are provided and accessible and usable. And then, the question for the court was whether the median was part of the roadway. And so, when we look at that narrowly tailored ordinance, most of the intersections that we've identified fall under having sidewalks, and the statute would apply to them. And so, the statute is working. It's been upheld by the district trial court, it's been helped by the Court of Appeals, and therefore, we feel it's the best way to go, and it's meeting the needs that we would otherwise meet with an ordinance at this time.
Okay. Obviously, I think our primary concern throughout all this has been nickelit and Highway 13, not just from optics, but life safety at that intersection. And I guess I would just ask our community to keep an eye on those things. I know we get a lot of phone calls, and we have to prioritize service as needed, but I, I think us leaning back on the state statute is going to be just as effective, if not more effective, than trying something on our own and then having judges poke holes in it when there's already an existing framework to address those.
Okay, very good. And, and what I also appreciate for all the work that you all have done is on 42 and Aldrich, because that was one of the biggest complaints also, because they left a lot of trash there as well. And also, on Burnhaven and 42, right in front of Chick-fil-A. So, that was another, and that median was very small and tight, and a lot of our residents and their vehicles were very afraid because that median wasn't that big. And they were standing on that median, which was, to your point, Attorney Shepherd. So, yeah, and we have a framework. The statute's been tested many times, so, yeah. Councilmember Schwartz, anything? Schultz?
No, I'm good, because I was right.
Okay.
Just throwing that out there, so we all know.
Yeah.
Our staff needed more things to do.
Oh, man.
Okay, so.
I've wrapped up for the meeting.
City Manager Lindbergh, Chief Schwartz, and our captains. We're, and Attorney Shepherd, we're going to go with the chief's direction to move with the statute. I think I understand that, Councilmember Keely, you wanted to make a comment?
I didn't, but I will.
Well, okay. But you know, you, we need to, it's, it's about inclusivity, you know?
You know, this is a, an issue that was sensitive to everybody, and I really pushed for us to do an ordinance, and ultimately, it was a win-win because we were able to get this done without drawing up a new ordinance, which we knew would have had a challenging path, but ultimately, as Councilmember Gustafson pointed out, we're stronger under state statute that the median is part of the road. So, I'm very happy, and thanks to all the efforts of the Police Department, because they deal with these situations every single day and have for years since the pandemic started, and it kind of blew up in cities across the country. We're not unique in this situation, but to Chief Schwartz and the entire troops that are out there doing that every day, especially on this day, thank you.
Yeah, okay, very good. So, all's good in that regard? Very good. So, we're following your direction, because you live with it, you know what's best, and our attorney has leaned into this as well, so thank you very much. So, all's good?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we have our direction. Thank you.
Okay. Next item is also yours, Chief, and this is the report on the use of drones.
Yes.
Chief Schwartz, floor is yours.
Thank you. Well, again, Madam Mayor, members of the council, appreciate the opportunity to present to you and our community on drones and drone use and public safety. Drone use, as I believe you all know, is quite common among individuals, and it's also common for cities to use as a tool for public safety. And really, it's just, it's more common than ever before, so, but we also know that use of drones can bring up questions, it can bring up anxieties, and so, as our practice is, we want to make sure that we answer questions, we want to be transparent, and with, with all of you and with the community. So, another important point I just want to make is, we know, and as you know, Burnsville Public Safety, we have a really important, special relationship with our community. We have very trusted relationships with our community. That's very important to us. We, we value that, and we've worked with our community over many, many years to, to get to that space. So, we don't want to tarnish that, we don't want to damage that. You often hear us talk about our badge and what that means to us. That's really a representation, a symbol of our relationship with the community. So, it's important that everyone here in our community knows. We, we want to hear from people and make sure everyone is aware of what we're doing. So, this evening, our city attorney and I are going to walk through drone use for public safety, and again, want everyone to understand, feel comfortable, and just understand what drone use is and what it is not. And what it is, is another tool that can help keep our community safe, help keep our officers safe during emergency situations, during dangerous situations, search and rescue operations, missing people, fire scenes, so forth, those, those kinds of things. And then, just really what it's not is, this is not public safety or the city, you know, using drones to inspect for everyday property code violations or random flight onto private property, or to be randomly flying for visual surveillance into people's private property and windows, mass surveillance, day-to-day operations, things like that. So, drones are very regulated, and many restrictions on law enforcement, which is a good thing. So, city attorney is going to go through the statute, so to help inform everyone of the, those regulations and restrictions. First, I'm going to talk a little bit about purpose and policy, and then we'll, we'll go from there, and then as you have questions, you know, certainly, we can just answer questions as we go along, or we can do that at the end too. So, just for purpose, of course, purpose of drones just allows first responders to assess situations in real time. That's very important, right? We can do that from a safer distance, we can look at reducing risk, we can improve response times, and really, it's about how do we do this in the most safe way for the community, for everyone involved, and for officers that are involved. And that's really what our mission is about in public safety. We want to be sure we can protect lives and property, and drones are a way for us to do that when other means maybe aren't available, or it's not the best use, so we can utilize drones in a different way. And then, in terms of process, there, like I mentioned, there's significant process for the requirements. So, before we purchase or use drones in Burnsville, we have to go through all of this. So, we have to draft a written policy, we have to have public comment, we have to have, of course, city council adopt the policy, we have to have the policy implementation, and then we have to move through management of the drone and the monitoring of drone use and reporting requirements. So, there's quite a bit of information and requirements that we have to do even before we decide that we can, can purchase or use the drone. So, that's part of why we're here tonight, to help inform everyone where we're at. And then, in terms of policy.
I'll pick him up.
Are you up? Okay. I'll let the attorney walk through the policy and the statute regulations.
So, mayor, members of the council, the legislature adopted a statute in 2020 that really prescribes the, both the process in terms of adopting a policy and informing the community, as well as some of the restrictions with the use of that drone once we get up and running. This was done after some communities were already, you know, getting drones for law enforcement purposes, and, and people were generally starting to acquire drones for various uses. And various stakeholders, ACLU, other privacy advocates, were involved in pushing for the idea of having some regulation at the state level, and were involved in the conversation specifically with respect to this, this statute that was adapted in 2020. So, we have to comply with it, both in terms of, again, adopting the policy, but in terms of using drones going forward. In addition, we're also bound by FAA federal regulation requirements, which we would do after we start the process at the local level to, to adopt a policy and purchase a use. We would also have to do, jump through the various regulatory hurdles that the FAA requires, including when they authorize the, the use of the FAA, there are some requirements with respect to kind of how you use drones locally. So, a couple, you know, big-picture, high-level restrictions that are in the statute. No drone may be equipped with weapons. Generally speaking, warrants must be obtained, this is subdivision two of the statute, and then there are some authorized uses where there is basically exceptions to a warrant requirement. I think it's important to note that from a constitutional law perspective, from a privacy perspective, drones have been allowed to be used without a warrant, but the, the state statute has sort of narrowed that and got more restrictive and made sure that it's, there's scenarios where a warrant is required, and there's scenarios where we don't have to have it. The ones that we don't have to have a warrant requirement, those are called authorized uses. We're going to go through those specifically, but those are the uses that when we do use them, we have to report every year to the state. Other important statutory restrictions, again, evolving out of this conversation that they had at the legislature about privacy concerns, is prohibiting the use of facial recognitions unless expressly authorized by warrant. You cannot collect data on public demonstrations unless in authorized use or warrant for non-authorized uses. So, in other words, if there was a public safety issue, an emergency situation that happened at a public demonstration, then that would become an authorized use, as we will see. There's also data privacy restrictions, as you know. Anything we do at a local level, we're subject to the Data Practices Act. Data collected must be deleted as soon as possible, but in no event later than seven days after collection. So, if the drone is up in the air for one of the authorized uses, that data has to be destroyed within seven days. Each use of the drone must be documented. Again, going back to the idea that there are checks and balances implicit in the statute, and the recording requirement and the documentation of that is part of that process. So, the authorized uses are in subdivision three of the statute. During emergency situations involving the risk of death or bodily harm. To counter the risk of a credible terrorist attack, so implicit in that is the idea that there is some assessment being made about the credibility, right? Preventing the loss of property or life rescue and recovery operations during disasters. Over a public event with a heightened safety risk. Collect information if reasonable suspicion of criminal activity, and collect information for serious or fatal car crash reconstruction. Chief, have I missed anything up to this point, anything you want to add? Okay. Again, as we talked about the reporting requirements, those include the number of times a drone was deployed without a search warrant in the preceding calendar year, the date of its deployment, and the authorized use met. So, again, when we look at subdivision three, and I think it's the total of nine uses, you have to say use one, use two, use three, and that's sent to the state, as well as the total cost of the agency's drone program. And then, again, on that reporting requirement, Department of Public Safety puts out a report every year that summarizes all the data they get from the local jurisdictions that have drone programs, so that they can assess, and the public can be aware of how those are used. That's also provided to the legislature. We talked, you know, I briefly mentioned the idea of, of the warrant requirement. Courts are also obligated under the statute to provide reporting to the state to make it clear when a warrant was applied for in the drone context and granted or denied. And so, that report, again, goes back to the, the legislature and the state, so there's a check and balance on that piece as well.
And then, in terms of management, so council's aware, costs have been budgeted in our 2024 operating budget. Should council approve the use, all operators have to be FAA licensed, so that licensing would be happening, and then data would be maintained using Axon Air Drone Sense. We use Axon Platform for our body-worn cameras and tasers, so that would be the vendor that we would use for this platform as well. And so, the policy question is, does the city council support the implementation of public safety use of drones to enhance community and officer safety? And with that, City Attorney Shepherd and I, and of course, captains are here, if there's questions that any of you have.
So, my question is to Chief Workman. Chief, I know that I have seen at the U.S. Conference of Mayors, that drones were also used with regard to fire and rescue. So, with this, if it comes together for police, is that an authorized use for fire, to use the drones without a warrant?
Madam Mayor, that's my understanding, is that for fire and EMS activities, it would be an allowed use without a warrant. And frankly, on a couple of recent mutual aid calls, or a recent mutual aid call, I've experienced it, and then a car accident in our own city as well, and I will tell you that it was a very beneficial tool from a fire and EMS standpoint, so, yeah. It's an authorized use without a warrant, is my understanding, and.
Yeah. Because the video I also saw had to do with the use of drones during a fire incident, where the drone could go in and then, and there was a heat feature, so you knew that there was somebody in there, and you had to rescue that person. So, there's a lot of different uses and tools around that. The other question I have is the City of Shulavista, California, presented at the U.S. Conference of Mayors in 2022, and the use of their drones. And one of the very important things that we all saw in that video was an incident where the drone was at the, at the incident before the, the police officers arrived, and the person, the report said that he, that this person had a gun. But what the drone did was it focused on it, and, and it went very close, that it was a lighter. And so, by the time the police officers got on the scene, they had that information, and the event was de-escalated, and everybody was okay. So, I, that was an important feature of the use of the drone as a tool to protect an individual who, there were complaints called about a gun, and, and people were afraid and for their safety, but to find out that it wasn't a gun, it, it was a, so, I see that there is a lot of benefit to it. I believe I had shared those videos back in, in 2021, but we had to go through our process to where we're at. So, members of the council, staff is asking us if whether we support the implementation of a tool for public safety use of drones, not only for police, but for fire. Okay, Councilmember Workman?
Yes, but I have a couple of quick questions, just for clarification.
Absolutely.
Are we, will we be able to use these for pursuits on foot? Like that guy who stole a car and crashed into a house, are we, is that within the realm of uses, you know, in aerial view with those heat signatures that we were talking about?
Yeah, I mean, I definitely think that's an option. It could be a tool, especially when you have people fleeing, or then people fleeing on foot. You know, if a drone can get there much quicker than officers. I mean, we set up perimeters, but a lot of times, those can see thermal imaging, or they can see heat sensors, or they can see where people might be. You know, we may have a perimeter set up, and the drone can also be a tool to let officers know this is what, you know, and again, in live time, this is what we're seeing. And that can be beneficial, especially if someone has a weapon or something like that. Sometimes you can see what people have. So, I, I could see that as a use. That would be officers on the scenes making those decisions with the discretion of, you know, what is the situation, what is the emergency, what is the public safety risk, and things like that, so.
And kind of in that same vein, is it something that we could utilize for, you know, a dangerous warrant or home entrance in lieu of sending officers in if we know that there's guns You know, sending in a drone primary to get a look before we, you know? I don't know how many times we're faced with those situations, but I know that they can happen.
Yeah. I would say if we're doing something like that, we're most likely going to have a warrant, and so then, they're going to say, yes, you can use the drone to go in and do that. So, that is definitely much more safer than, you know, officers going in or trying to breach a doorway and calling people up. a doorway and calling people out, you know, as we talk about warrants and things like that. So definitely drones can, you know, again, in that case with a warrant, go to like a window of an apartment, or what can, what can be seen before entry and things like that, so absolutely.
And then I guess my last one is, how are FOIA requests handled with these? You know, obviously understanding that seven days for anything besides an ongoing investigation. Is there guidelines on how that's handled? Are we able to give up that data if it's within the seven days, or?
Oh, that's a good question. I guess I'm not sure on the, if within the seven days.
Yeah. So the subdivision six of the statute addresses the Data Practices Act components, which is a FOIA request. More or less, it's presumptively not public data. The subject of a data may be able to access it in a request in that seven day window of time, potentially. There are some other provisions in there for different data requests and sharing of data, but generally speaking, it's private data, and then it would be, after seven days, destroyed.
Even if it's being held for a criminal investigation and say, you know, the person involved's attorney needed that for, I guess, well, then I guess maybe that leads me to another question, is that data admissible in a criminal hearing in court? Is that something that we could use if there was a situation to show, you know, this person did A, B, C?
Councilmember Workman, one of the provisions talks about when it's active criminal investigation data, so that's going to allow you to retain it longer than that seven days, and potentially might be able to use it in court, it might be admissible. You know, it is important, as we're talking about this, just to know there is a provision on evidence, and if, if the drone statute is violated, if it's misused, then that data won't be, be able to used as evidence, and I think that's an important check on it, just sort of dovetails with the general criminal procedure principles. When, you know, there's a violation of, you know, warrant requirement, things like that, then, then evidence may not be able to come in. And so it is consistent with how that's treated, generally speaking, in criminal prosecutions. But generally, if it's going to be evidence, it kind of moves into that criminal investigative data at that time.
Same as like a body cam.
Yeah, I was going to say, like, it would be the same, excuse me, if the subject of the data would be able to access that data. Someone else can say, well, I want this person's, I want the drone footage on this person's incident. And then when, my understanding is when those go to court and all of the case information is sent, then that is where access can happen too. Attorneys have to share information and discovery information, and then that information can get shared in criminal cases that way.
I think this is a great addition, especially if it's something that we can utilize to keep our officers safe in otherwise dangerous situations, and it feels like we've got a framework here to protect people's privacy. I know that there's a general concern about how much technology and cameras and everything that's happening everywhere in the public space, but I don't have any major concerns as this, speaking directly to this, because I think the positives outweigh any potential negatives on this one, so.
Anybody else? Comments? Yeah. I'll go to Councilmember Keeley, as it's, and I'll come back to you. Okay, Councilmember Keeley, floor is yours.
Thank you. I, I'll say it this way, I have my little bitty hand up at the bar.
I know, I can't see your little bitty hand, but your, your actual hand I saw.
Okay. Well, I agree with the comments stated. I mean, this is, I think it's very important, and we've had a lot of discussions of this on a national level with the National League of Cities Transportation Infrastructure, this drones, drone use, advanced air mobility, unmanned aircraft, this is all part of what is going on across the country in a lot of cities, a lot of larger cities across the world. And drones is very, very interesting and engaging and can raise a lot of red flags, right? When people hear about it, citizens hear about it, they tend to go right to things like a drone flying around peeking in my window, and that's not allowed, right? So there's a lot of community engagement that has to happen, open, honest, and transparent engagement, to be able to get through this process. And I think we'll, we'll follow a great policy blueprint and a great process to allow the entire community to weigh in before we get to that point where we're actually purchasing a drone. So I think, I think this is, this is not a hasty decision. Other cities around us, as noted, have already made this decision and gone through this process, and as a leader in the community, I think it's time for Burnsville to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gustafson?
I'll make it short, I'm good with it.
Okay. Councilmember Schultz?
So I do have one question. So body cam footage is kept longer, but drone footage, unless it's in an active investigation, would be destroyed after seven days. What if it's not in an active investigation, but a resident makes a claim saying that something untoward happened and requests the footage? Similar to how they would request body camera footage. But they do it on day eight.
Yeah. Does the statute speak to that, Attorney Shepherd?
Mayor and members of the council, if we're following the statute on day eight, the material's not there. If they're before day eight, on day one through seven, if they're the subject of the data, the statute allows them to get it under the Data Practices Act. If they're not the subject to the data, they're not, it's, it's not public data.
Okay, so, like, that's, it's understandable, but that's odd. Do you know what I mean? Because we already have practices established that people do understand and know about with body cams, and we were leaders in that. But it's slightly different with drones, even though it's not really different. It's not really different. So there, there is a question there, and perhaps the legislature would address that and clean that up. But thank you for answering my question. As it stands now, when we need to use a drone, we ask Egan, and we do have mutual aid, and we frequently ask other cities, and cities ask us for help all the time. I think as of now, although I'm going to be, it's going to be a four to one, that, that just that pause of asking Egan is the half second pause that always gives us a moment check to make sure that we're on the right side of everything. Because we don't want to be on the wrong side of everything, especially when you're instituting something new. The other thing that it does is, as Councilmember Keeley alluded to, right when you start to talk about drones, there is an already established perception in the population about what that is and what that means. It is extremely difficult to change people's minds from something that they know and have known for years. And I am extremely protective of the good relationship that we have between our police and our residents. And I don't want it unnecessarily damaged, because not only does that keep our residents safe, that's the number one thing that keeps our police safe, is that good relationship between the two. I consider that more than almost anything in our city, our city's number one asset to our city. So while I realize it would be handy, and there are a lot of situations where it could be very valuable for us to have our own drone, the fact that we can borrow Egan's or someone else's drone, which we have been doing, and we have been doing that, and yet not incur the potential backlash and mistrust from our residents, to me, that's worth thinking about and strongly considering. Because there's not, there's not a huge, there's an upside to us having our own, there absolutely is. There's not a huge upside, and the potential downside on this one is pretty, pretty big. And we have been spared a lot of the turmoil that other cities have been spared for decades. And I, I don't want us to erode that. So that, that is my position on it. I realize, I realize it's a four to one, I get it. But man, I would just, I would just pause on that one and back up on it a little bit, because once you start to chip away at a trust and over something that isn't even, isn't even accurate, but it doesn't matter. Like, it doesn't matter if what people believe is accurate or not, that's never the question. Once that gets chipped away at, you don't get it back. Like, there's no do-overs on that, so that's my position on that.
Thank you. Chief, I go back to your initial statements when this was opened. You said that you value the relationship that we have with our community, and that we're going to go through a thorough process. So I believe that. I believe because that is what we have been doing here in Burnsville. Our partnership with our community, our engagement with our community is something that we continue to value. And I know that the work that our officers do, because we do practice community engagement and policing, and the things that we're doing right now, is going to help that trust to be built with this particular tool. I remember, because we were the first PD that used body cams, and I remember all of the conversations around all of that back then. And now people are proud of the fact that we were leading and boldly leading in, in using this tool, because it helped the general public, and it also helped our officers, and it held everybody accountable. So I believe in the work that we've been doing, and we will continue to do that work. And it appears to me, from the process that you have laid out, and also with regard to your confidential memo, Attorney Shepherd, that talks about the different areas and the discussion, and also the limits on use. So I think all of that is in state statute already, but also the FAA has guidelines around all of this. So at the same time, we're going to have to. My concern with having a pause and reaching out to Egan, when I saw how the drone was used, when an incident took place, officers were on their way to try and say to Egan, please, send the drone, they would have been there, and then guns would have been drawn when the individual didn't have a gun but had a lighter. That delay is like our response time. Are we going to have efficient and effective response time to an incident that could save lives or de-escalate a situation? So I think these are things that are really critical for us to take a look at. And the policy and the process that you have laid out, and how we're going to go through all of that, and how we're going to manage, manage and monitor the use of drones, I think all of that is very transparent to our community. So I'm in favor of it. I mean, I saw how it had worked in other communities through reports of other police chiefs, and also, I mean, you can go on YouTube and pull up all of the videos regarding drones and the use of drones and so forth. So Chief, City Manager Lindberg, I think you've heard from former members of the council that we proceed with the process, unless there's any other comments?
Just one more, I guess, question. Has Dakota County and the sheriff's office been using drones?
Yeah, they have for a long time, but it's been, at least I remember, this was back when, God, it was almost ten years ago when they had their first drone? Was it about eight or 10 years?
It's been quite a while.
It's been quite a while, and, and, yeah.
Did we use, or did they use a drone for the guy who took over the island on Crystal Lake?
I, I don't recall if we, we would have requested a drone.
Did we?
To, if it was Dakota County. The water is theirs, so typically they would respond, but I don't know if that we had a drone out there, I don't remember.
Is that a scenario? Obviously, again, that's not something that happens often, if ever, but would that, their jurisdiction would override ours? And so is the use of our drone superseded by, I guess, where a particular incident is happening?
Well, I would just say, you know, we are going to work with our partners, and, you know, in those situations where something is happening in the water, you know, we're working with Dakota County and trying to figure out, like, okay, what, what is our part? The main thing is, is how do we get it safe? So whether it would be our drone or Dakota County is, it kind of becomes like irrelevant, who's got one? Let's figure this out, let's make it safe, and then we can figure out, you know, how to proceed. But just as partners, you know, and I appreciate the comments, Councilmember, because we, I share your concerns, you know, about the community. We always want people to, you know, understand where we're coming from. But we also know Egan, while we, while Egan and Dakota County and others have been good partners to us, they also have their own city and things to do, and so for that, for us to have them in the city for how many ever hours that takes, or to take their staff as well to do that, is also, they might disagree a little bit that they want to keep doing it for us, so, but I get where you're coming from.
We'll just grab Bloomington's then.
Yeah, yeah, so everybody.
They like us and would like to help us.
Yes, right. But yeah, so we would be working with our partners, and, and I would say there is a pause in a lot of these cases where it's like, okay, because what tool is it that we have to use? And is it the drone? Is it something else, you know? And time, distance, and cover is something we talk about a lot, so that we can, we have to pause and figure out, like, what are we, what is, what are we going to do here? And we have to be thinking like five steps ahead as to what, if we do this, what is going to happen next? So there is a pause in what we're doing, and, and I expect that, the captains expect that, out of the officers and the sergeants that are going to be, you know, at the line level, working this, so. Hopefully that answers your question, but yes, we'd be working with the county and...
Red tape isn't going to get in the way of public safety.
Right, no.
And the other thing, we're going to have to need pilots. And they're all going to have to be approved through the FAA, licensed, they have to be licensed through the FAA, correct?
Yes.
So this is a long process.
And this proposal is for how many licenses, again? How many officers to be licensed?
Well, we haven't, we haven't set the number yet. We would, we would look at, what does it take to have coverage over all of our 24/7 operations, right? So how do we have enough people so that if we would need a drone at any of those times? So we hadn't decided on a number, but if I'm guessing, you know, you need somewhere at least around eight or so people to make sure, and then, as well as partnering with fire to figure out, you know, some more support that way.
Thank you. All right. So we have a majority of the council saying that we move forward. And then, so the process is you're going to be looking at drafting a written policy. And then, and then, then we have a public comment, period, on the policy. And then, then it'll come back to us to adopt after the public has spoken to the policy, which is really like our governance. It's putting up white paper together, and then the, then the people can, can comment on it, and then, then we can...
I'll work with city attorney and city manager and call from there.
And so we have a process going forward, so thank you very much. And then, in that policy, there will be the implementation and also the management and monitoring of the use. Thank you very much for all of your work, and I know that you all had a lot of input into all of that, and so, and researched to what other departments have done in this space. So thank you so much. Thank you. There are no other items on our agenda except for roundtable. Councilmember Gustafson?
I'll be happy to start.
You have anything to report?
Yeah, we had our experience with Burnsville meeting in December, where the board ratified the contract that we ratified, so we're all legal with them now. They also voted in that meeting to go forward with the rebrand. They also voted in that meeting to go forward with the rebranding and the, the new website that we've been creating, it's pretty robust, it's, uh, people are working with Berkeley on that whole thing right now, which is, uh, working out very well. And the last thing, uh, to report on that, there was a vote on, we met with, uh, the folks that were talking about putting the Gulf Driving Range down on the, the old freeway landfill area down there. And they're, they're in support of that project with the caveat that they know that they have to pass through the state of Minnesota to get all the proper things done down there to be able to develop anything. But should they get that done, they're definitely in support of that project itself. That's my report.
Councilmember Workman?
I got nothing.
Okay, Councilmember Schultz? Councilmember Keely?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Some MBTA and STA news, we're preparing for the legislative session. As you all know, microtransit is getting a lot of attention and growth. It just got a little press, um, a story about it recently and it cited our MBTA connect in the story, which is great. A legislative group is right now in Scott County, um, they might be done by now, uh, doing a listening, uh, listening session and our STA and MBTA reps are there, uh, speaking out about, uh, they dedicated funding from the new transportation tax, um, and dedicated microtransit funding under the new transportation bill that passed in 2023. We're just waiting to receive those funds. Metcalf hasn't allocated our suburban member share yet, um, and, uh, we did get a tidbit of news that as a result of the legislative, uh, group doing this, um, listening session that there was an interest to, um, get those funds to us, uh, before this meeting tonight. Don't know if that happened, but, uh, strange how things happen. On the NLC news, um, I've got a new board member session on the 17th. TIS chair duties have kicked off, uh, I'm, I'm, I've had two or three meetings with our staff liaison and one thing of note that, that is really related to my MSP airport, um, NLC was asked to put together, uh, a technical working group for advanced air mobility in our agency. And, um, there was, uh, six or seven representatives of departments of transportation from around the country, uh, selected to be invited to be a part of this. And our MSP airport chief operations officer, Roy Furman, uh, was, uh, on that list and I was asked to reach out and connect with him, get to know him and invite him to be a part of this, uh, particular, um, interagency working group for, uh, advanced air mobility. So, uh, really good news, uh, it is pretty widely known, our, our airport has won a lot of awards by travelers and, and industry, uh, and it has a very well-respected leadership team and this is just an example of it. That Roy has actually already worked on a TIS, um, counter UAS rulemaking committee, uh, unmanned air, uh, rulemaking committee. And, uh, so he's, uh, got some, some background in this particular area. I thought that was relevant tonight since we had a drone conversation earlier. Also happening, uh, this week, I believe tomorrow, our NLC president, David Chambers, uh, who's, uh, mayor of Rancho Cordova, California, Mayor Corey Woods from Tempe, Arizona, and along with Clarence Anthony, the NLC executive director and a specialist on transport, uh, on cities, I apologize, and technology, uh, are doing a panel at the Consumer Electronics Show in Las Vegas. Very exciting. The panel discussion is called Ingredients That Make A Smarter City And A Better Community and it really talks about, or they are going to talk about digital use by cities, AI use in cities, uh, which helps with things like public safety, wastewater, all kinds of things across the spectrum, so that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. From, um, my portfolio, the only thing that I have to report is our municipal legislative commission. Our breakfast is on Friday at the Egan Community Center and I believe that all of you received, um, an invite and our own chief, BJ Jungman, is going to be presenting, uh, at that meeting, so. Uh, and then, uh, we have our quarterly meeting with Savage coming up here at the end of this month, correct? And then, um, that's all I have, but I do want to mention, uh, you know, our staff continue to improve on transparency and on reports. And if you did not notice, in our background information, there are two written reports that come out of our community development team's efforts. Uh, one of it is on the quarterly housing program report and the other one is the quarterly economic development report. So if you haven't seen it, please take a look. Jeff, thank you very much. I mean, here you are, more and more, um, reports are coming to us that we've never seen before, but it gives us a good insight as to what our staff is doing and what's happening in our community. So if you haven't seen it, um, I think you, it's a, it's a, well, I always think it's a great read on the housing, uh, report and also on the economic development report. So thank you, Jeff, to you and your team. Thank, I think Beth is the writer on all of this, is the author, so thank you so much. So if you haven't seen it, please take a look. Uh, is there anything else, City Manager Lindberg?
Nothing from me tonight, Steph.
Anybody has anything else to add? So thank you to the team, great team, thank you so much. And with that, we stand adjourned by acclamation. Thank you, everyone.